This meeting is back in session. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is we have one presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council. I would like to call up Brenda Chambers III and Mom's Demand Action. I should have asked your name in advance.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Brenda is an old neighbor.
Yay!
Good evening, Council, once again. We're here tonight for proclamation Light the City Orange Day on June 2, 2017. Whereas inspired by high school students from Chicago, the Wear Orange Campaign was inspired by the childhood friends of Hadida Hadeya Pendleton, a 15-year-old high school student from the south side of Chicago who was shot and killed on a playground just one week after performing at President Barack Obama's second inaugural parade. Whereas soon after this tragedy, Hadeya's childhood friends chose to commemorate her life on her birthday, June 2, by wearing orange, the color hunters wear to protect themselves and others. And whereas on June 2, 2015, what would have been Hadeya's 18th birthday, a broad-based coalition asked people nationwide to join in what Hadeya's friends started, thus launching the first National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Wear Orange Campaign, to promote awareness and education of gun violence in America. And whereas nationwide partners such as the Brady Campaign to prevent gun violence, Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, Gun Owners for Responsible Ownership, My Brothers' Keeper, MoveOn.org, National PTA, and Sandy Hook Promise are working hard every day to build a future where every American can live free from gun violence. And whereas on Friday, June 2, 2017, more than 150 key buildings and landmarks nationwide will turn orange in support of National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Wear Orange Day, to show their support for a future free from violence. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kenton Seiver, Mayor of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 2, 2017, as Light the City Orange Day in the city of Southfield, and encourage residents and businesses in Southfield to light the city orange or to show their support to end gun violence by wearing orange. I'd like to present this to both of you. I will, and if you have something you'd like to add, either one of you, please feel free. City Hall will be lit in orange on June 2. The spotlights out front will have orange gels on them.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
If anyone would like to join us in becoming members, first and foremost, you do not have to be a mom. We are founded by a mom. You can be a non-mom, you can be a man, you can be anyone if you'd like to join us. We are part of the Macomb and Oakland chapter, so we're the only chapter of Moms Demand Action in the area. And it's very simple. If you want to join our plate, it's just simple text. You can text the word JOIN to 64433, and we can't thank you enough for your support. Thank you.
And for the record, for the clerk's name?
Sure, Lindsey Warren.
And you're from?
I'm from Royal Oak.
Okay. You're the chair of the...
I am the local group leader for the Oakland and Macomb Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is an appointment to the Southfield Local Officers' Compensation Commission.
I'd like to call Donald Jones up, Dr. Donald Jones. And I'm asking the council to approve the appointment of Dr. Jones, longtime Southfield resident, former principal of Southfield High School, and longtime educator, to have your approval for the appointment to the Local Officers' Compensation Commission.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move the appointment of Dr. Donald Jones for the Southfield Local Officers' Compensation Commission.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we appoint to the Southfield Local Officers' Compensation Commission, Dr. Donald Jones. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. I would have you sworn in this evening, but we don't have a city clerk this evening, so she will swear you in at a later date. She'll contact you and have you come in to get sworn in. And I've known Dr. Jones for a fair amount of time, and I'm sure that the Compensation Commission will be enhanced by his presence.
Thank you.
He's a no-nonsense person, and I'm expecting big things. Thank you.
I would invite Dr. Jones to come up and be welcomed by the council.
Please do.
Come around. Come around. Thank you, Council.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
[inaudible]
Where do you go?
We have one set of minutes to be approved.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move the approval of the regular minutes of April 24, 2017.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 24, 2017. Is there any discussion, any corrections? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. We have a number of items on our consent agenda this evening. For those watching or in the audience, Consent Agenda Item H has been pulled, so we will not be discussing that this evening. Consent Agenda Item A is the extension of the Audit Service Contract, and we discussed that earlier. Plank and Moran has agreed to a two-year contract with no fees, with no increase in their fees. I would like it no fees, but no increase in their fees, and to continue the terms of the expired 2016 contract, which expired at the end of the 2016 audit. The cost is $189,536 for each year, and these fees include a $45,000 annually of additional services which are billed in for the audit readiness. Consent Agenda Item B is a request to authorize the master broker for the former Northland Mall site, which we discussed earlier. And this is a two-step process. First, we select the master broker, and then through the bidding process, and then once the broker is selected, then a contract is negotiated for terms and conditions that the broker will deal with. Five firms were interviewed, two filed for being picked. The top-ranked scoring firm was Friedman of Farmington Hills, and it's a fairly complicated cost system that's part of their contract. So we discussed that earlier, and there were no questions that were not unanswered about the cost of this candidate. The Consent Agenda Item C is the Northland Mall environmental abatement. It's the award of asbestos and abatement bid, and the staff recommends, the city administrator recommends, that the council authorize a contract with Environmental Specialist Services Incorporated of Detroit, Michigan, for asbestos and environmental abatement at Northland Mall. The Target Store Firestone Auto Center, to the tune of $1450,000 with a 20% contingency in the event that there's an overrun for a maximum of $1,740,000. Consent Agenda Item D is the Southfield Police Department pole camera replacement. The police department had a pole camera, and it now belongs to someone else. So they need a replacement. The pole camera is a mobile video surveillance system that can quickly and easily relocate to surveillance areas. So they use it for crowd control in an event like if there's an event where there's a large crowd, they can set this camera up and take pictures of the crowd, so if any undue accidents start to take place, they can take pictures of that, and the police can take control of the situation. But the cost of the camera is $17,397.72, along with the difference of $2,235.28. Well, the total cost of the camera is $19,615. We have the money in our account budget, so we got replacement funds, or $17,397.72, but in our account we also had $2,235.28, which makes up that $19,000. The Item E is Southfield Police Department speed signs, which we talked about earlier. The police would like to buy three signs that will be removable and move from place to place in neighborhoods where speeding has been noticed by the neighbors or excessive speeds. They can fast them to signposts in the neighborhoods, and it will flash the speed that a car goes down to bring that to the automobile driver's attention that they need to slow down. So they've asked for three signs, and the total cost of the signs is, I mean, they're $5,204 each with all the options, for a total of $15,612. Item F is the purchase of point-blank vision, these are the vests, bulletproof vests that the police officers wear. After about five years, with perspiration and wear and tear on the vests, they no longer are safe to wear for our police officers, so they have to be replaced about every five years. This year, they would like to purchase 45 units, but they have put a two-year request in. Forty-five units this year at $733.75 per vest for a total of $33,018.75, and next year, 36 units of $733.75 for a total of $26,415.09. And the winning bidder was CMP distributors of Lansing, Michigan. Consent Agenda Item G is approval to assign the contract for Michigan Meters to Ferguson Waterworks and the contractor from Michigan Property Network Tree Services to Michigan Property Clearing. This is really just a name change. Michigan Meters was recently acquired by Ferguson Waterworks, and the forestry department is currently working under the second contract extension for tree removal services with Michigan Property Clearing, which is the new name that will be for municipal functions. So this is no cost, it's merely a name change for contract services, so that when we pay the bill, we pay to the right people. Item H is pulled. Consent Agenda Item I is the authorization to accept donations from Michigan Modern Art and Antique Show to be deposited in their account, and to accept funds to support Common Ground, which is a sculpture by Charles McGee, and to set up an account for that purpose. The Public Art Commission already has an account, and during April, the Michigan Modernism and Antique Show was held here, and the peacock that was formerly at Northland was on display, and it needs some repair. And they were taking funds for not only the peacock, but for all of the artwork at Northland that we purchased. So what they are requesting is that we allow the funds that were donated at the modernism show to be put into the public art account. And the second piece of that is the Charles McGee Common Ground statue that the Public Art Commission is attempting to purchase, and so they want to create a new account so that any donations can be put into that account specifically for that piece of artwork. And they're asking anyone that wants to, once the account gets set up, there will be a public relations campaign, and they're asking anyone that's willing to donate to that artwork, please do, and it's tax deductible. The next item, Item J, is a request by Plum Hollow for fireworks permit for August the 26th. They're having an event at Plum Hollow, so they would like to have fireworks that leave the ground, and they need our permission. The next item is Item K, and it's appointment of the representative and alternate to the southeastern Oakland County Water Authority. Lee Schultz, our city engineer, will be the representative, and John Mishrina, our deputy city administrator, will be the alternate. Those are the items that we have in our consent agenda this evening. I need a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, and K.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and it's a 2017-18 Community Development Block Grant.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me? This is the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. These are funds that are authorized by HUD.
Do you want to wait until the screen's down so everybody can hear?
Sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Again, good evening. This is the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. These are funds that the city receives annually from HUD. As of today, we don't know exactly what our funding levels will be from HUD, but we are anticipating the same as last year's entitlement, which was $451,118. We do have to have a public hearing, that's what we're here tonight for. What we are proposing is basically the same funding levels and same activities that were approved last year. If you recall, some of the things we've done with the program, it's helped the people. It's a program based on benefiting low and moderate income areas and people, and some of the activities we run are the SHIP program, Rebuilding Together, CHOR, Code Enforcement, TOS, Southfield Youth Assistance, South Oakland Shelter, Human Services, Emergency Relief Fund, Fair Housing. And those are just estimates up there, but it does touch a lot of people in Southfield, helps to make it a little better place to live. Some of the things we've done, the TOS program, provide assistance to seniors, we have a SHIP program, the Southfield Home Improvement Program, we do rehab work on low and moderate income households. We get involved in some volunteer efforts. With Rebuilding Together, we have volunteers doing work, yard work, painting, helping to fix up the homes of homeowners. Another group worked in Barvik Park last year and worked in several parks this year. Our biggest project in a long time is the Comfort Station, the ADA improvements at the senior gardens. This is under construction, hopefully will be completed in the next month or so. So the program touches a lot of people, does a lot of good things. Here's our budget balances over the last four years, and you can see the activities really don't change much. And the main thing, I guess, in this slide is if you look at the funding levels for 2016-17, those levels are the same as what we are proposing this coming year. As I said, we don't know exactly what we're getting from HUD at this time, but we would suggest that we continue with these activities, these funding levels. Any changes to the entitlement money we get from HUD would be reflected proportionately in these activities. And this will allow us to, again, to start our application process, do the environmental reviews, and many of the other regulations that are required. So basically, what's on the screen is what we are proposing. We're hoping, you can open it up for public comment, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and after the public hearing, perhaps approving the resolution that is attached to your reports. I don't know if Mr. Zorn wanted to add anything.
Okay, if you'll take a seat, I'll have the public hearing. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this issue, our CDBG, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three Seeing no one, start for the microphone. I will close the public hearing. Council?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the, I'll move the item.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the CDBG funding as presented, even though we know that it's tentative.
Yes.
When we find out the final number, we will adjust the projects to meet the amount of money that we get.
Correct.
So are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is MP 6 Northland and SubArea Redevelopment Plan.
I'll just need a minute to switch the screen.
Okay.
It's like a halftime show.
I guess.
Please. Good evening. Good morning. Our first public hearing regarding planning items is MP 6 Northland SubArea Redevelopment Plan, which is an amendment to Sustainable Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan to incorporate the Northland Concept Vision Redevelopment Plan, the Northland Design Guidelines, and Northland Hudson's Building and Power Plant Mixed Use Feasibility Study into the Northland SubArea Redevelopment Plan. As you may recall, the city acquired the former Northland Mall around December 2015, and we're at the end of about an 18-month planning process to amend the master plan. Sustainable Southfield was adopted in June of 2016, and we just launched bringing on consultants and developing a vision plan a few months prior. So we had some very preliminary sketches in the master plan dealing with Northland, and we went through a full nine-month process, and it was in September of 2016 that the consultants in the city came back to council and had you adopt the vision plan as a guide for future development. We made presentations on the design guidelines and the overlay development regs to council on February 6. You then authorized the planning department to follow the Michigan Planning Enabling Act statute requirements for amending the master plan, and we submitted letters to all individuals that were affected by this property and all adjacent communities, registered utilities, the county, and so forth, on February 13. And we had a 42-day review period where we received comments.
I guess.
Our first public hearing regarding planning items is MP6 Northland SubArea Redevelopment Plan, which is an amendment to Sustainable Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan to incorporate the Northland Concept Vision Redevelopment Plan, the Northland Design Guidelines, and Northland Hudson's Building and Power Plant Mixed Use Feasibility Study into the Northland SubArea Redevelopment Plan. As you may recall, the city acquired the former Northland Mall around December 2015, and we're at the end of about an 18-month planning process to amend the master plan. Sustainable Southfield was adopted in June of 2016, and we just launched bringing on consultants and developing a vision plan a few months prior. So we had some very preliminary sketches in the master plan dealing with Northland, and we went through a full nine-month process. And it was in September of 2016 that the consultants in the city came back to council and had you adopt the vision plan as a guide for future development. We made presentations on the design guidelines and the overlay development regs to council on February 6th. You then authorized the planning department to follow the Michigan Planning Enabling Act statute requirements for amending the master plan, and we submitted letters to all individuals that were affected by this property and all adjacent communities, registered utilities, the county, and so forth, on February 13th. And we had a 42-day review period where we received comments. Through March 30th, we made a presentation to the DDA on March 24th, 2017. The Planning Commission held a study session on April 19th, and then a public hearing and recommendation on May 3rd. Mr. Spence was here before you, study session on May 8th, to present the concept plan. And tonight, we're holding the public hearing and adoption of the subarea plan first. The next public hearing is dealing with the actual regulations, and I'll go into more detail at the beginning of that. But where we come from, again, I referenced these three vision design guidelines, which council has seen over the last six to eight months and have adopted in various forms. But to put some teeth in it, we need to amend the master plan and have this as part of our subarea for any future design regulations that the council would consider. Our project purpose and overreaching goal was to determine the highest and best use of the mall site and to formulate preferred development plan and strategy to guide future reinvestment. Our overarching goals were to establish a strong pedestrian and vehicular network, which integrates into the fabric of the district, to create dynamic public spaces, to develop a street system, to develop, to encourage development that complements existing land use patterns, and to consider adaptive reuse specifically of the former Hudson's Building and the power plant. Within the vision plan were some sub-districts. We didn't feel that the market would bear one developer was going to come in and develop all 120 acres, so we created these zones of influence, for lack of a better term, or districts. We established some green space and a street network, which acts as a framework for future development. We wanted to be flexible rather than rigid. We created a central green space that capitalizes on existing site grade, so the lower parking area of the former Macy's, let's drain all the water there instead of digging out a basin and trying to create something new. We looked at a feasibility with the Hudson's Building. We wanted to take advantage of the visibility of Greenfield Road for retail. We wanted to have a mix of uses, including office, that created some synergy with Providence Hospital campus. And for our long-term viability in our future, we wanted to create a mix of housing options to attract young professionals, young adults, and empty nesters, who will then, this development would act as a gateway into our other single-family homes and other housing options throughout the city. Master Plan District is roughly broken into areas from 20 acres as high as 40 acres. And we've shared some of these images before, but the shopping district would be located on the lower end of Northland Mall and could accommodate one big box retail, but with a higher design standard. Our Lifestyle District would take advantage of the existing Greenfield Road commercial corridor and residence within the area. Our Central Park District would be located around the water feature, the stormwater feature, and take advantage, hopefully, of adaptive reuse of Hudson's, the former Hudson's Building. The Innovation District was to play off the strengths of both Providence Hospital and OCC. And then the parts network, we've used the references of spoke and wheel concept, where there's a periphery, green belt about a mile and a half around the boundaries, and then spokes into the center, which ties everything together through public green space, and ultimately the seven-and-a-half acre Central Park. So here's the built-out version of the final plan, which includes 150,000 square feet of retail, standalone retail of 85,000, mixed-use 200,000 square feet, the Hudson's Building repurposed as loft apartments and office with a 505 interior parking garage, medical office of 170,000 square feet, up to 850 residential units, and 125 boutique room hotel. These are all based on market studies that were conducted throughout the process. And finally, these are some concepts of what some of this public space could look like if it's fully developed out, with about the scale and density of what the long-term vision of the plan is. And the main feature here is to create a seven-and-a-half acre Central Park with a main water feature that filters and acts for stormwater detention for the entire 120-acre site, and also a place that could be programmed year-round. So it could be a gathering space for the new development, as well as bringing residents in the community together. Again, this was based on public input throughout the process of what people would like to see in the plan. And then some final images of the design. The final plan in 3D, you see a built-out here with Northwestern Highway, Greenfield, and Hudson, and JL Hudson Drive, Northland Drive. And then the final Central Park concept with the Hudson's Building being repurposed. So the master plan, as you know, acts as a guide or blueprint for future development, and also guides the council when they're making zoning implications and decisions, which we'll cover in Part II of the public hearing. I do have one letter received from the DDA. I'd like to read into the record after public comment has been taken, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have at that time.
This is a public hearing, and if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Anthony Adams. I'm an attorney for Triumph Church. My address is 1577 Redbird Drive, Troy, Michigan. We had been in conversations with the city administration and just had a number of questions regarding the final layout of the plan. Specifically, our first question is why the overlay district has to extend over to the Millennium Site. If, in fact, the focus of this plan is to deal with the old Northland Site, we just have questions as to why that district would have to extend as far as our property. Secondly, we have questions really regarding the access road that currently exists. As we understand the plan, there will be some changes to that road. We do have some concerns regarding how access to our property is going to be maintained. That is a major concern of ours. Thirdly, we also have questions and issues regarding the design standards that may be imposed. We spent a little under a half million dollars now preparing a final plan, specifications. We've been in meetings with the building department concerning these plans, and we do have some issues with respect to how those plans might be impacted and the financial costs that may be imposed on our church. And so those are just a few of the issues that we would like to raise and have further discussion or conversation with concerning this development plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Preston Titus, and I'm a resident and owner of a condo in the Legacy Development Area. And I wondered to know, how will that affect the existing legacy compound there and the other different developments surrounding that area? I mean, I'm not certain from reading this and what have you, what the effect is going to be on where we live at now.
Can you make a note of that?
Where does he live?
Legacy.
Legacy, right. Owner of a condo there at Legacy Place.
Okay, we'll, when the public hearing is over, we'll try to answer that question.
Okay.
Okay.
Will the Legacy Place and others be a part of this new development? Or will they be, will they exist as it is today? Will there be major changes, or would we be completely eliminated?
We'll try to answer that question for you when the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Crowe, do you have some more comments?
Yes, I did have a letter from Mr. Alisevus on behalf of the Southfield Downtown Development Authority dated May 22nd, 2017, and a copy-
Keep your microphone on.
Copy has been presented, yes. A copy was handed out earlier this evening. I'll read it for the record. Dear Terry, as the Executive Director of the Southfield Downtown Development Authority, I am writing to support the Northland SubArea Master Plan Amendment being presented at the May 22nd, 2017 City Council Meeting. The Northland Mall redevelopment is a critical asset within our area. It is adjacent to a major hospital, St. John Providence, and growing community college, Oakland Community. The importance of getting the redevelopment completed will set the district and city on a path going forward for the next 50 to 75 years. The plan represents a unique blend of multi-use retail, housing, healthcare, and public lifestyle integrated within a walkable and connected green space. The overall goal of the plan is to guide the coordinated development of the site, attract new investment, and create a signature development to serve Southfield and the surrounding community. It is highly flexible to adapt to market conditions while at the same time keeping true to the vision of vibrancy, safety, inclusion, and community. I'm truly excited to be part of the redevelopment team and believe the plan will lead us to the next level of prosperity for a city that is the center of it all. He lists his contact information. Sincerely, Alisevus, Executive Director. The two speakers during the public hearing-
Yes.
Their questions were really specific to the next public hearing on the Overlay Development District, and I would like to address those comments in my presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the master plan. It's a vision. Think about it as when you hire an architect to build a house, you have a blueprint. Then you're going through the process, and you change some of the interior design, or you add an addition. Is it a two-car garage, a three-car garage? Money comes to effect, marketing comes to effect, but this is your guide for future decisions. The next item gets a little bit more into the detail and the regulations, and I will be explaining the difference between the master plan, the overlay development regulations, and the boundary district, which these two gentlemen were specifically located within.
Okay. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fercassi.
Before I begin, I'd like to mention to the gentleman who's from the church, you know, when you speculate on a piece of property next to 125 acres, it's very, you know, iffy what's going to happen. And you always say in the business, you know, buyer beware. And I'd just like to make that comment because, you know, that parcel there is just a little portion of the 125 acres and the value of the development that's going to be occurring. Anyways, to the planner, you know, you're talking about a home that's being built and building it to your needs and to the zones. I've asked the consultant many times what, you know, with the zoning, well, the zoning is your part, but the infrastructure, easements, sewers and water, and how they are going to be throughout the development will be needed to, if you say, for example, a developer comes and wants one little district, whatever that one is, you had blue up there, say you take a blue square, and want to develop the blue square. There's the red, there it is. And there's no plan for what the arteries are going to be, roads, sewage, how much volume of sewage is going to be there, how much volume of water is going to be runoffed. I would think that, and I told the consultant this, that that plays a real important role in developing the park. When you're saying this is going to be commercial, this is going to be what? Because each one demands a different kind of facilities, infrastructure. And that's why I think that this is kind of premature from that standpoint. I mean, the plan is great, the vision's great, but I'm just saying is that I told the consultant that that's what I thought we would feel important when you divvy up the different sections. The thing also that I wanted to mention was that, and I know it's funds, but, you know, when you go into a development, normally, you see a beautiful entrance way being built, say for a residential neighborhood. You see an entrance way, fountains and the whole thing to bring you in to see what the area looks like and say, boy, I'd like to have a home in here. And so I guess what, if I'm looking at time periods when the development should take place, I'm wondering why the water treatment that we see there isn't in a park that is going to be there, trees or whatever. Don't set the tone of what the development is going to look like. In other words, you're looking for a Class A developments, whatever zoning they are. And right now, you know, you don't have an idea. I guess if you take a person through that, even after the buildings are all out and cleared, you don't get, it's hard for a person to get a vision of whether or not they want to invest in that area. And I really think that that piece is so vital to setting the tone of that area that that should play a major role in where we go forward. But I still go back to the infrastructure, sewers, water, and those kinds of things, so that the network and infrastructure is, and easements are all in place, so you know what you have to deal with if you get somebody coming in and wanting a small district, big district, whatever it is. Those are my comments.
I think those are very valid comments, and I know the city administrators working diligently to come up with some type of financing mechanism to start some of these infrastructure improvements. One of the things I think that's exciting and should give some encouragement of development is this is a very well-thought-out plan that's based on market reality, and we're not just selling lots, we're selling a place that's integrated with mixed use, that there's a commitment that we're going to fully develop this project for mixed-use development. Whether it exactly gets built this way, there's flexibility built in it. We want to be able to respond to market conditions, but this is not just a bunch of lines on a sheet of paper, and I want lots 24 through 48. This is a place that people want to be. And we've seen examples, the 5th or 4th Ward in Atlanta, where the park space was built around this stormwater feature. They had to solve flooding problems, and this became an anchor for future development. So there's the synergy of the whole, the sums of the parts are greater than the whole. So, again, this is a vision for long-term development. It's flexible. It will help give developers a sense that the city has thought this through and that they're going to be part of a larger project.
Anyone else? All right. I need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move the MP6 Northland SubArea Redevelopment Plan.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the MP6 Northland SubArea Redevelopment Plan as presented. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show, there are three votes yes, four votes yes, one vote no. The next item, and for the two gentlemen that came to the microphone, your questions will be answered in this public hearing. We have public hearing C. Mr. Cruz, or Mr. Crowe? Yes, yeah, Mr. Crowe.
I'll go make a presentation.
To really, because it's the Florida, Mr. Cruz. Our next public hearing, PZR ODD 17-0001, the Northland Subarea Redevelopment Plan Overlay Development District Regulations, which is a public benefit rezoning to rezone from RC Regional Center, RS Regional Shopping, ERO Education Research Office, and RMU Multiple Family High Rise to Overlay Development District, ODD, underlying Central Park, Shopping, Lifestyle Innovation, Boundary, and Green Space Districts, and to establish regulations for the redevelopment of the Northland Subarea District, including, there's a number of addresses that were listed in the public hearing notice. The goals is to regulate and guide the future development of Northland Site, to promote and integrate the plan principles, to set clear expectations for investors, to ensure a consistent level of quality, to refine the image and the brand, and to promote a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development pattern. The code has been outlined in a matrix that was included in your packet. It summarizes all the design guidelines. It outlines specific site and building standards. It's objective. The design guidelines support and illustrate the intended character, which are more subjective. Project boundaries, and this is, this will get to some of the questions that were raised in the previous public hearing. So we have our roughly 120-acre former Northland Site that goes from Northland Drive to JL Hudson, Northwestern to Greenfield. But we felt it was important that what we're calling the Boundary Districts, the areas immediately adjacent to the development from 8 Mile all the way up to 9 Mile, that they provide a transition zone, a little bit higher design standards, not as quite demanding in quality as the former Northland Site, but something that will respect and complement that as a transition zone into the area. So the Boundary Districts have been identified in the purple colors here, and they support and complement the plan for the Northland Mall proper site. They follow the project study. The Boundary Districts, again, is a transition, and it follows the vision plan that was created. There's a clear, concise matrix that's been developed that talks about standards with regards to height, setback, density, size, quality of materials. They illustrate the patterns, the resulted intended character, their tool for providing minimum development requirements. They specify permitted uses. They are objective in nature. The metric categorized by district and by development criteria, again, lists, as I stated, what uses are permitted, building height, setbacks, built-to-lines, general engineering utility requirements, landscaping, screening, and buffering, lighting, circulation, and parking, so that when our standard landscape requirements and our zoning ordinance get applied to this district, we want a common brand of elements, whether it's a bench, a trash receptacle, a fence, a brick pier, or the type of landscaping that's screening parking lots. We want it to be unified so that there's a branding gateway effect into the district. And this, these are design aids for developers. The one thing that we hear constantly is that developers want a transparent process. They want to know what the requirements are, and if they meet their requirements, they're going to get approved. The guidelines break down the various aspects of development, including signage. Each district is unique. They relate back to the open and green space. This is just a list of, and some images of what each district could look like if they're fully developed with our regulations. So they give a sense and character of what a big box could look like, what mixed use, what the scale, the size, how close it is to the road, and so forth. It even gets down to creating the public realm space, how wide the sidewalks are, permitting outside seating, retail, streetscape furniture, and so forth. And then what the landscaping, the perimeter landscape buffering requirements, and green infrastructure requirements that would be required throughout the development, so it's a unified development. Even gets to gateway signage, the materials and the type of iconic images that we're looking for throughout the, as signature development icons. And it gets down to specifics such as architecture, signage, and public art. So the Boundary Districts were created as a transition zone into the main area. The access roads, the periphery access roads will remain intact with some minor modifications. The design standards is to get a better product. We don't currently have very specific design standards in our zoning ordinance, so therefore we're clearly identifying what they are. The gentleman from Legacy, what I tell people is existing development won't change at all, but if there's any major new development or redevelopment that expands or enlarges on the existing development, they would have to comply with these new standards. So in essence, existing uses and development don't have to do any changes unless they have proposed expansion in the future, then they would have to require with their new standards. One of the standards we talked about that the city adopted in the very auto-dominated era of the 60s and 70s was requiring 75-foot setbacks, and we have a field of parking between the street curb and the building. These new design standards relax that setback and have minimums and allow buildings to come closer to the road to create more human scale and more density along the road. So that would be a significant change. It actually, I think, is an incentive to existing development because they can create higher density, and they can move their buildings closer to the road. So with that, I do have one additional letter I'd like to read into the record after the public hearing comments, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have at that time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
My name is Anthony Adams, Attorney for Triumph Church, 1577 Red Bud Drive, Troy, Michigan. I was a little concerned about the comments from Councilmember Fracassie about let the buyer beware and speculating. Our church has been on this site for quite some time, and if I recall, it was the efforts of Triumph Church that assisted the city of Southfield in acquiring the entirety of the Northland Site, hoping that we would be working in partnership with the city as they continued their final design standards. So this is not a question of us speculating. We are a valid member of this community and are investing our dollars to ensure that we offer a outstanding facility. I guess I would have an additional question as to why the requirements in the overlay district would be higher than the standards that the city would impose on its own site. I don't understand the logic behind that. I still have not yet heard an answer to the question as to why those boundaries were extended. We also have really grave concerns regarding the use of what you call the rezoning, simply because you've changed the overlay district to include our particular site. I don't think under Michigan law that the city can zone a use out. And if we were going to expand our use, I believe we would be entitled to do so under Michigan law. So we continue to have questions regarding the expansion of the district to cover our site, the additional requirements that will be imposed, and particularly, public space requirements. Who's going to pay for those public space requirements? How is the infrastructure going to be integrated onto the site to, we can sure we have proper runoff and things of that nature for our facility? These are questions, I think, are legitimate questions that we would like to have answers to. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, not yet. Is there anyone else that wished to speak on this, this subject? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Counsel, my name is Preston Titus. My address is 16275 West 9 Mile Road in the Legacy Condos and Apartments. From my understanding, what you're saying is that as far as the legacy development is concerned, everything should remain pretty much the same as it is now, except for future building and development at the complex. And so, and from what you're telling me, it should be a positive benefit for people owning condos there because of the fact that you're going to be coming up with some high-end type of development and what have you here.
Okay, you can answer the questions when everyone
Yes.
has had an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Okay? He has your question, so he can answer when everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone else that would speak on this subject? Please give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Daisy Lee. I live at 22580 Saratoga Drive, Unit 102.
Do you want to pull the microphone down a little bit? It's pretty hard to hear you.
Okay. I live at 22580 Saratoga Drive, Unit 102. That's at Legacy Place. I was at the last meeting that we had, and it was very informative in terms of, we questioned roadways and et cetera, and we found out that we were going to have some roundabouts in our area in the offset. You did explain that. However, now you're saying that we have to, we are kind of maybe a part of the above standard for our area, and I note that we are located on the back end of the project. So my question is, will there, when they start building additional areas around us and they are a part of the overlay plan, how will that affect us in terms of taxing our property, number one? And number two, at that point, we may look a little antiquated since we are an older building. Well, we have to get involved in trying to upgrade the overall look, and we do have signs all around Legacy Place, although they are visible, but they could use a little sprucing up. So in terms of different association members, they're asking questions in terms of what is going to happen to us in terms of building, structure, taxation, and anything else that's part of the new development.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing.
I do have a letter.
Want to go ahead and answer the questions?
Can I read the letter in first?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. This is a letter dated May 22, 2017, from the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. Dear Mr. Crowe, on behalf of, on behalf of the Southfield Downtown Development Authority and its Board of Directors, I am writing to express our organization's support for Southfield's proposed overlay district ordinance. On March 24, 2017, Mr. Terry Crowe, Southfield City Planner, discussed the details related to the overlay development district and the improved effects it would have on future development to the SDDA Board. The Board unanimously embraced the idea of having an ordinance which would allow for consistent development and recognize the positive impact it would have on the district. The SDDA supports the recommendations offered by the Planning Commission and the City Planner and proposes to work with all involved to create another effective development tool. The ordinance would be a vital tool for stimulating redevelopment in the SDDA District. It would provide developers a consistent understanding of the requirements of future development, something highly valued by the business community. Sincerely, Alisevus, Executive Director.
Thank you.
Again, I'll try to address the issues that were raised. With regard to Triumph Church, again, the highest design standards will be on the Northland property itself. The Boundary District acts as a transition from the standard zoning districts into the development. And for all of the three members that came up to speak at the public hearing, there's no effect change to your existing development. It's in the future, if you build a new, a new piece or extend existing, that you'll have to comply with these standards. The comment about raising taxes, we don't, we can never forecast that. What I did state at the Planning Commission public hearing is that during the Great Recession, we took a 50% hit in our, on our valuation. We were hoping that this would stem the tide and raise, raise those taxable values, and, you know, the tide raises all boats. So we hope that's a positive effect on Legacy. Again, Legacy Place is not required to do anything different, other than if they have any future building plans, they would, they would have to comply with these standards. As far as antiquated look, they are a condo association. We did offer our, our staff's expertise to meet with them. If they want to spruce up their gateway signage and landscaping, we'd be happy to meet with them, but no one's compelling them to do that. Again, with regards to whether this is in compliant with Michigan State law, we followed the Michigan Planning Enabling Act with public notices and the requirements to amend the master plan. We also followed the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act with regard to making amendments to the zoning ordinance, so we're in full compliance with the zoning. With regards to utilities, the utilities are available from the public realm, just like they would be through any development. We're still working on long-term strategies as far as trying to be effective with our stormwater mitigation, but we have engineering standards in place that require, with the county, a 100-year storm, to be dealt with on the site of the subject property as they develop. The benefit would be, is if we could pool the funds for each individual site and put it into a master retention, detention area, there would be a cost savings for all. But we have stringent standards that we follow on a site-by-site case, and those don't change with this development. And I think, I think that's addressed all the comments that were raised during the public hearing, but I'd be happy if the council have any specific questions. Tonight would be hopefully approving and introducing this ordinance, and then we'd come back next month for an enactment, and I have a suggestive resolution in your packet for your consideration.
Okay. Counsel. Mr. Fracassie.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, all due respect to this gentleman and respecting his church. As a realtor, a businessman, and a councilman, I probably wouldn't advise you to buy that church and building until you know what's going to happen to the 125 acres south of you and to close Michigan Inn, which is just west of you. Those are two serious kinds of things that buying property, you would have to invest and find out what's going to happen around your purchase. Secondly, I probably wouldn't advise, as a councilman, wouldn't advise the city to buy the Pennies Building because it was over a million dollars to buy it, and finding out after you bought it that it was a million three worth of environmental problems with it to clean it up. So, so if you'd like to be partners in that mess, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Uh, no, never mind. Not from the, not from the audience.
I'll be here after, I'll be here after the meeting. Sure.
Other counsel? Other counsel, excuse me. Excuse me. Not from the audience, please. Any other counsel comments?
One question.
Oh, Mr. Mandelbaum.
The hotel that we're hoping will one day be remodeled, they're just outside the border. They were not included. Was there a specific reason?
They're, they're within the Boundary District.
Okay.
And they have a currently approved site plan on file, that they, they're located right here. So they're within the Boundary District.
Okay.
So as long as they comply with the currently approved site plan, they're under those standards. If their site plan approval expires, or they don't complete their due diligence within the approved period, then any new future development would have to comply with the new standards, just like any of the other developments. So we're hopeful. So we're hopeful that it'll be brought back as a fully fledged hotel, and based on the standards that were provided, it will be an upgrade with, from the existing conditions, but they would not be required to meet these new standards because they were approved prior to the adoption.
Okay. And are they aware of, assuming they were made aware of what we're planning?
Well, I can tell you that during the process, we were early on in the concept vision, but one of the concessions we were able to get them is to provide, for lack of a better term, a southeast to northwest ten-foot easement for pedestrian connections, looking to the long-term future of Oakland Community College students who might want to access this new development. So we created a zone, a sidewalk easement on their western, or, excuse me, on their northeastern portion of the property that would connect in. That was, that was in the very early stages, and they were agreeable to do that as part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Just clarification question, and let's take the Legacy Apartment, or Legacy Condos. If they decided to upgrade the building, they said it was antiquated-looking, if they decided to upgrade the building, does that consider, is that considered new construction?
Well, it's, I guess, the degree of upgrade. You know, are they expanding or enlarging, or are they just doing facade renovations?
If they're just doing facade elevation to make it look more modern?
I mean, we would, we would want to look for a complimentary look, but again, these are flexible, and they're less stringent in the
Border.
In the Border Districts.
Yes, okay.
They're providing transition. If they want to fully take advantage of the density and the relaxed setbacks, that's to their advantage, but they're not being quote-unquote penalized. It's just, it's defining the elements should they want to move forward.
Okay.
And again, we offer to provide them some pro bono technical advice, just like we would with any subdivision on gateway entrances and so forth, should they desire, just to make those cosmetic improvements in the short term.
Okay, I asked that question so that it would help clarify for the, the two people that came forward that they would not be backed into a corner that said they had to do, they had to do anything.
They'd have to comply with their regulations.
No, no, no. They were not being forced
Not being forced to do anything.
To upgrade their building or
No, no, no existing conditions would be forced to upgrade unless they were proactively initiating a change.
Okay.
The other thing mechanically I should mention is that, and I worked very closely with the legal department, once the overlay development district is put in place, then as each site gets developed, there will be a separate development agreement that would tie in all of these design requirements. So each and every, this would be an enhanced site plan review with a list of all the design parameters built into the agreement that the council would have final sign off on and the developer. So we would still have a development agreement for each parcel without going through the whole rezoning that we have done on the five previous overlay development districts because we're doing that rezoning right now. So this, this will be a recordable document for future generations for each site that they would have to adhere to, and it's negotiated throughout the site plan process.
Okay. All right. This is a new ordinance, and so I, we need an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Southfield by amending the official zoning map of the city of Southfield by changing the zoning classification of the following declared parcels, parcels of property, and they are listed below. So I do need a, an ordinance number?
One six seven six.
One six seven six. I need a motion to
Are we approving the overlay development district and then the ordinance, or is all at once?
I believe it's a two-part
Yeah, we need to do
Approve the, approve the, the plan
Yeah.
And then introduce the ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
Approve the rezoning.
Okay, I need to, I need an order, motion.
Mr. President, we moved, I move that we approve the Northland Sub Area Redevelopment Plan Overlay.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the item as presented by the planner. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show, there's four yays and one nay.
Mr. President, I'd also like to move that we
Introduce.
That ordinance sixteen seven
Introduce.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, that we introduce, I'm sorry. Ordinance number sixteen seventy-six.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we introduce ordinance number sixteen seventy-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
Thank you.
The next item is Item D.
And I just need to, a minute to reset the video
Okay.
From the projector. The next public hearing is PZR seventeen zero zero one, which is a rezoning request of Southfield Signs to rezone point nine one acres of property from OS Office Service to IL Light Industrial, property located at one eight nine four zero West Eight Mile Road, and I have a brief video introduction.
PZR seventeen dash zero 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 one is a rezoning request of Southfield Signs to rezone point nine one acres of land from OS Office Service to IL Light Industrial. The property is located at one eight nine four zero West Eight Mile Road on the northwest corner of Eight Mile and Stahelen Roads in Section thirty-five of the city. The property to the north is zoned R-two, single-family residential, and P vehicular parking. The properties to the south across Eight Mile Road within the city of Detroit are zoned commercial. The property to the east across Stahelen is zoned OS Office Service, and the property to the west is zoned I-one industrial. With regard to the existing land uses, the property to the north is an undeveloped wooded lot. The property to the south across Eight Mile Road within the city of Detroit is a CVS Pharmacy. The property to the east across Stahelen Road is a food land supermarket. The property to the west is in an industrial building. The petitioners proposing to rezone point nine one acres of land from OS Office Service to IL Light Industrial. Property has one hundred and eighty-seven point five two feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road and a depth of two hundred and ten feet. Issues considered by the Planning Department during the review of the rezoning were: The Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan indicates local mixed use for this property; compatibility of new land uses with the budding existing developments; the standards for rezoning of property.
If, if the applicant is here, would like to make a couple introductory comments.
Would you please give your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Mosi Tuna. I'm from one eight nine four zero West Eight Mile Road. I've been here a few times, so basically, I'm just taking the building and converting it into a light industrial. I own a sign shop, which basically we just do fabrication of signs, banners, billboards, and so on. Really, that's all I really have to say, and just hoping I can get this finalized today.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Pardon me?
Through the chair, I just wanted to point out that he has a sign manufacturing shop. In order to do that, the production, assembly, and processing has to be in a light industrial district. It is on Eight Mile, and it is adjacent to a heavier industrial district. So this is an appropriate location for this type of business.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes. Could you please give us your name and address for the record?
My name's Thomas Curley. I live at two one three two five Stalen, that's at the corner of Stalen and Nemellrose, about a quarter mile north of the property in question. And it strikes me that light industrial is probably an appropriate use for this property. It doesn't seem like it would cause any undue problems unless there's a lot of traffic problems with it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I will declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi.
The, there are two things, Terry. Is there a landscaping plan that's going to be accompanying this approval on that piece of property? Is there room for it?
Well, the first, the first step is
I didn't get a chance to go down there, but I don't remember.
The first step is to get the rezoning, and then administratively, we would be looking at those, those issues, landscaping, site circulation, if the parking lot needs any repair. Those are all would be covered under the administrative review after the rezoning has been approved.
The, is there any reason why the property on the east side is not also coming up, it's zoned OS? In other words
We encourage
Eight Mile Road is kind of unstable as far as zoning. You can go one place and it's, and it's OS, or then it's industrial, light industrial
Right.
And commercial, all these different zones along there, and, and, you know, having for years worked on Eight Mile Road to try to get some kind of a, of a pleasant look to it, you know, everything seems to be wrong. You know, right next to, you'll see where the woods are.
Right.
You know, and that thing to have a wooden fence, and that fence is not always in best shape, and matter of fact, a car went through a part of it, I guess, had to repair it. But I just, I just think that we should ought to send it to the Planning Department and look at all these zones that are along Eight Mile Road and see if they're, if they're good, because, but is that a parking lot today?
Yeah, there's vehicular parking to the north that's zoned.
And that OS is parking, right?
Yeah, we did encourage the owner to reach out to the adjacent property owners to see if there would be other interest in expanding the, the light industrial district, and he didn't get any positive feedback. But we can, we can undertake that from the Planning Department, looking at that corridor.
There's a lot of areas, there's not a lot of depth.
Right, and that's part of the challenge, especially with light industrial. But this, this sign manufacturing, and we find this all the time. Businesspeople find a building that seems to work and fit for them, and then they find out that the zoning is not appropriate. And we had, we went through that with the Wolverine Tractor Site and other sites along Eight Mile. So we're slowly trying to, to nip, nip away at this, and each and every time, we get a higher quality development because we can institute our landscaping and screening requirements that didn't exist thirty, forty, fifty years ago when many of these businesses first were developed.
Yeah. Maybe, you know, when you get a break, if you get a break, you can, you can monitor all those zones that are along Eight Mile Road and, and see if there's room to expand them and probably rezon them for different uses.
That's a good point.
Still protecting the residential, of course.
Yes, we'll look at that. That was part of the master plan, the whole Eight Mile Corridor, and working with Eight Mile both of our association to look at adaptive reuses for that corridor.
Okay. Any other questions? I need a motion?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I move approval of PZR one seven dash zero 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 one.
Let's support it.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Ficassi, that we approve the rezoning request for Southfield Sign, PZR one seven dash zero 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 one. Any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
We need an ordinance.
I need an ordinance number?
One six seven seven.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number sixteen seventy-seven.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we introduce ordinance number sixteen seventy-seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Our next item?
Our last public hearing tonight is PSLU seventeen dash zero 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 one, which is a special use request of Super Car Wash Systems for the demolition of existing structures related to the Northwestern Boat Company and the expansion of the existing car wash used to include vacuums on properties located at one nine seven oh eight and one nine seven four zero West Ten Mile Road. I do have a brief video to introduce this item.
PSLU seventeen dash zero 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 one, PSP seventeen dash zero 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 one, is a special use and site plan review request of Super Car Wash Systems for the expansion of the existing car wash to include vacuums and additional parking. The property is located at one nine seven oh eight and one nine seven four zero West Ten Mile Road on the north side of Ten Mile Road between Evergreen and Red River Drive in Section twenty-three of the city. The subject property is zoned B-three general business. The property to the north is zoned RA, single-family residential. The property to the west is zoned OS Office Service. The property to the south across Ten Mile Road is zoned ERO, Education Research Office, and the property to the east is zoned B-three general business. With regard to the existing land use, the current property is developed with the Northwestern Boat Company. To the north is a screen wall with homes beyond. To the south across Ten Mile Road is a bus stop and office building beyond. To the east is the existing car wash building, and to the west is a chain link fence and the existing boat shop beyond. The site contains one acre of land with four hundred feet of frontage on Ten Mile Road and a depth of one hundred and ten feet. The special use request is to expand a motor vehicle washing facility within the B-three general business district. The submitted site plan indicates the expansion of the existing car wash facility onto adjacent land for twenty-two vacuum arms and associated parking. Issues considered by the Planning Department during the review of the special use and site plan were: The site plan standards of Article eighteen general business; the proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting local mixed use for this parcel; and the petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
This is a, the public hearing is specific on the special land use requirements. There's a subsequent site plan. We need two separate actions, but we don't consider the site plan if the special use land use doesn't get approved, but they're really tied in to each other, so we can discuss them. We just would need two separate motions. I believe the applicant and the architect is here if they want to make some comments. And then the clerk's office did receive a letter earlier today that I'd like to read in the record after the public hearing's been closed.
Could you give your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Todd Gazan. I'm the owner of Super Car Wash nineteen seven zero eight Ten Mile Road in Southfield. As was presented by Terry, we are planning to purchase the boat store property, and on that property, we're going to take down that building, turn that property into a park-like setting with a lot of landscape, and adding, actually, what we did since the last time I spoke to everybody, we decreased the number of vacuums by twenty percent. We're now looking at, and the drawings that were up there show eighteen vacuums instead of twenty-two. twenty-two. What that does, it, it adds eight hundred more square feet of landscaping to our project, also moves our vacuum units another twenty-five to thirty feet further from the, from the residential houses. The reason, the reason that we're doing this, I currently have no vacuums at all on my site. We own nine car wash locations throughout Metro Detroit, and this is the only one we don't have vacuums. By adding, our vacuum's going to help us compete in the car wash market in the area, and will give us added services for our customers. I also believe it's going to help increase the property values along Ten Mile, as we're eliminating a longstanding ice store, which has been the boat, the boat store on Ten Mile there. I'm very aware of the new development and growth in the city of Southfield. I understand the city's rich tradition, having grown up here most of my youth, spending lots of time right here in this very building, and the ice arena, pool, ball fields. I went to Vandenberg Elementary, Thompson Junior High. So I know the city quite well. It's my, this is my, like my old stomping grounds. Just want to say a little bit also about Super Car Wash. All our locations, we're very involved in the communities that we're, that our locations are in. We've done several events in Southfield with both the school community and church communities. And reading and hearing the wonderful things about City Center, we plan to be involved in the City Center and the events that City Center will bring to the city. Just to finish, I strongly believe our project will be a complement to City Center. It's going to be a very attractive look. It's going to help keep the residents in the city, and I think it's going to bring a lot of economic value to that area that's already growing and the other businesses in that area. One last thing, I just wanted to, Mr. Stempian, if you could just speak for one second, a little bit about a couple of other points, that the boat store has been for sale off and on for the last fifteen years. The seller's attorney, the boat store attorney who's not here tonight, he spoke at the study session, you guys all heard a little bit, gave you a little history of the property and its trouble, and why it hasn't been able to sell, that I was the first real buyer that's brought something real to the table in all these years. And so I just want to let Mr. Stempian speak for one moment.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
All right, Chester Stempian, 29895 Greenfield, Southfield. I know a little bit of history on that site because twenty years ago, I was commissioned to try to put up an office building on that site. And because of the shallowness of it and its location with a used car, well, on one end was a gas station, the other end at that time was, well, we were next to the marina. It was before the car wash came in. But he just felt it wasn't a good fit for him. And so that's my last recollection of twenty years ago. But I do remember on that block, all the buildings that are there now were there then. To recap, the, starting at the northwest corner, you have the mobile gas station, an alley, the marina, and what is now the car wash, then a three-bay auto service facility with all doors facing Ten Mile, and then a liquor store, which, like the car wash, has entrances and exits off Ten Mile Road and the side road. If this site could be developed as an addition to the car wash, we will eliminate two entrances into where the marina is now. And we would use the alley facility, so there would be no curb cuts added. Traffic study that was done indicates that there will be no additional congestion if we had this car wash at these vacuum units. Now, typically, you see car washes that are perpendicular to the street. So you see entrances and exits, you see the action of the vacuum units, the entries, and so on. This particular car wash is all brick. It has huge windows, like a picture window effect, gabled roof. It could be an office building, the way it looks. It's a perfect setting for the car wash, because if it were allowed to be competitive with other car washes, it's an opportunity to purchase this land and extend the driveway through these vacuum units. That would be well landscaped. I wasn't involved with the design of the car wash, but I see that it was very well controlled for view with a three-foot brick wall on a berm. It's heavily landscaped. It's got surface retention, which is very well landscaped and maintained. We would continue that on the next site. And with the additional landscaping and so on, you'd hardly see the action with these vacuum units. And as I said before, the traffic is not additionally impacted. In fact, it would be less if there was another office building on that site. I did review the possibility of what would happen on that site if someone else developed it. A strip center would not be a good fix, because people would like to park in front of a strip center. And as we heard from the attorney for the marina, they never had a developer ask if they could put up a strip center on that site. An office building is possible. But again, with an office building, you'd have more hard surface, you'd see the parking a lot more. And it might be a hard sell, because if the land could not be used for an addition to the car wash, you'd be between a gas station and a car wash. So there aren't many developers looking to develop that site. It would be nice to extend what the Figer development is. It's got beautiful landscaping, gardens, nice facades, and so on. But at least the car wash looks quite decent in that block. And of course, Evergreen has been developed with a lot of new buildings and turnaround, roundabouts, and so on. So it's, we're sort of sandwiched in between two developments that have recently been developed and look very attractive. But in the twenty years that I know about the site, these buildings are on a site that were there twenty years ago. They're all doing well. They're not about to leave or fold. So I think it would be a good addition if we would be allowed to extend the service of that car wash and have Super Car Wash be competitive with other car washes in the community.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I, I'd like you to just address a couple of issues that I know will come up. Can you explain what your hours of operation will be?
Our, our hours of operation, we're open Monday through Saturday. I'm sorry, let me start again. We're open Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Our hours are seven AM to seven PM. On Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we're open seven AM to eight PM. And Sunday, we're open eight to six.
And just, I, I know it's part of your plans, but you're proposing to raise the existing six-foot screen wall to eight foot?
Yes, that, yes, that six-foot wall would be eight foot.
And as indicated previously, they had proposed twenty-two vacuums. And based on these recent plans we're just submitted on Friday, you've reduced those to eighteen vacuums and located them further west away from the neighbors. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have one, one question for the counsel. Am I, am I able to come back up and speak again?
Pardon me?
Am I able to come back up and speak again? Okay.
After the public hearing.
After the public hearing.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. And if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Through the chair, I do have one letter that we received today. "To whom it may concern, I live behind the super cars wash on Ten Mile Road. I have not had a peaceful moment since it has been bought and operated by this owner. The workers yell constantly, pull up, or neutral. This goes on for hours. I can hear them when they talk, hear the recently installed buzzer that goes off often during the day. I have booze bottle in my backyard. They throw over the wall and endless amounts of trash from their dumpster. This starts from the time they start till they close seven days a week. It's mind-numbing. While in my backyard, I can hear the sound of cars driving on Northwestern Highway, so it's obvious I will be able to hear these twenty-two vacuums. The thought of having the extra noise has me considering moving. If you have any questions or want to stop by and experience the noise for yourself, please feel free to contact me. Craig Frost, 19675 Hilton Drive."
Thank you.
What is the address on that?
19675 Hilton.
Okay, I got it. I didn't know the address was on it.
Did you want to come back up?
So, I just want to speak to a couple, a couple of things on there. We do have a buzzer that is part of OSHA that has to go off whenever we turn the line on. I can look into maybe the level of that buzzer needs to be turned down if that's within the OSHA allowances. I can look into that. As far as liquor bottles and things being thrown over the wall, I spoke on that before. I, I think that is false. It's not my guys. We run a very respectable business. There are a lot of people that walk along our wall to the party store and back through. Out onto Hilton, there's a little gate towards the end of our property that they can walk out. And I don't know if maybe if that's what's going on there. But I will say, I don't know Mr. Frost. He's never come over and voiced any of his concerns to me. I've never been visited by any inspectors from the city council of any problems I've caused to residents. I do know one other thing about Mr. Frost, that he might have a personal issue with the owner of the boat store, because he used to work there and was employed on two separate occasions at the boat store. Thank you.
Have you ever made any attempt to go see him?
I honestly was, this is the first time, just this past week, when someone had told me that he might be writing a letter. I've never, I've never met him. I've never went over there, because I didn't know we had any issues with him.
You were never aware of any issues?
I was never aware of any issues with Mr. Frost. I, the only neighbor that I've met, who was, who I met for the first time at the Planning Commission Study Session, is Mr. and Mrs. Hayes, who live directly behind us. Mr. Frost lives closer to the automotive shop. But Mr. and Mrs. Hayes expressed concern for what we were doing, and I've met with them on two different occasions. I've talked to Mr. Hayes several times, walked them through the property, and I, I think eased, eased their concerns as, as they haven't come forward anymore.
Okay, as far as I know, none of the council members have ever been contacted by anyone. But that's not unusual. It's, they would, we would get contacted if it was, you know, if they were-
But what I was saying about that, though, is, is that if, if, you know, if I, like in my, in my neighborhood, if I've had a problem with someone, we call the city and, you know, ask to speak to somebody at the city. Maybe there's inspectors that come out, enforcement officials. I, I just was saying, I haven't been visited by anybody, so I wasn't aware of any issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi.
Uh, I will move that PSLU 117-0001 special use request be approved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve PSLU 17-0001. What was the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission recommended denial.
Pardon me?
Denial.
The Planning Commission recommended denial.
Denial?
They felt that the, this type of use, because it's a special land use, did not fit with the vision for the city center and the density. I believe that the Planning Commission felt that this was a definite improvement over the existing boat shop. But they just didn't feel that the, really, the development of a parking lot with vacuums met the vision of what the city center is hopeful to be. And, and for those reasons, there was a recommendation, recommendation of denial. It wasn't a unanimous. But that's what they recommended.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Ficassi.
Yeah, I, I was going to the boat place almost since I was a little kid. And, and it, it kind of, when Dad passed away, it kind of got out of hand. I think, from my perspective, there's boats were just all back there, and it was really not too well organized, I'll put it that way. And when I seen the, the plan, the site plan with the fence and wrought iron, it sure improves the Ten Mile Road frontage. You know, you have a grocery store there and an auto shop there to the east, and, and they both need some cleaning up. But I think this really cleans up a big section of, of Ten Mile Road. And I, I do respect the letter that came in. And, and when the gentleman was in before council, he asked, we asked him about the noise, and he was talking about the difference in noise is being buffered because of a new engine or whatever it was. But the one thing I'd like to add to my motion, though, and if possible, I'd like to cut the hours on that two days, to make it seven to seven each day, excepting Sunday eight to six, because that would give the evening, if there is any noise or disruption, it would give him that evenings of quiet.
Now, because this is a special use, we can put requirements on, special requirements on. Mr. Cruz, do you accept the amendment?
Yes, I do.
So just for clarification, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday would be capped at seven PM.
Yeah, Sunday's the only day that would be-
Eight AM to six.
Eight to six.
Okay.
President?
Could you repeat the hours that change, please?
Yes, the proposed, the proposed approval would be subject, limiting the hours of operation Monday through Saturday from seven AM to seven PM, and Sunday from eight AM to six PM. And I, I do want to, at least, you asked about the Planning Commission and what their recommendation was. We, the gentleman that applicant referred to was Mr. Hayes that lives right adjacent. He did have concerns. His concerns of the noise was not so much the vacuums, but people playing loud music when they are vacuuming their car and hanging out. We did receive two anonymous phone calls concerned about the noise. Now, the mitigation that the applicant is proposing is to provide a higher screen wall. I believe the hours of operation may help. And I would ask that the applicants, whoever their onsite manager is, help to address the issues when, when noise becomes a factor, that there's some self-policing onsite to the best that they can to reduce that nuisance, because that's the one constant that we've heard with the neighbors on Hilton.
Terry, I, I agree with that, because, you know, and, and I hope that whoever you put managing the car wash would, you know, put a little note out there somewhere, respect the neighbors. If you're playing your music, you know, shut it off for a while, you know, whatever, keep it down. Because, yeah, some people like to keep their music going while they're cleaning their car. I know that. But, but if a good manager walks up to somebody and says, you know, we'd like to respect the neighbors, cool it a little bit, I think that would be doable.
Yeah, we want everybody to be good neighbors. So I think by raising the wall two feet is going to help with the, with the noise. Also, if there is garbage being thrown over the wall, it'll, it should stop that. I presume that you have garbage cans, trash cans available, so that if people are vacuuming out their cars and they have a wastebasket in their car, they can dump it into-
Yes, each, each unit has its own trash can that's attached right to the, it's in your, I think there's a picture in your drawing that shows the trash can on the side of each- It shows the trash can on the side of each vacuum unit.
Okay, now, you don't have any, you don't have any vacuums out there now. And if people are complaining about paper and stuff being thrown over the fence, where would the paper be coming from that's being thrown over the fence now? Or the bottles and, and things being thrown over the fence? Because I imagine cars go in one end and people stay in the car and come out the other end?
The only garbage onsite is, right now, because we don't have vacuums, is, is our own garbage. We don't have a lot of garbage. We, we don't, we get, we have a six yard dumpster that gets dumped twice, once every two weeks, instead of even weekly, because we don't have a lot of garbage. So I, I can't speak for garbage being thrown over the wall. I mean, we, we, we have a dumpster. It's enclosed in a brick, a brick structure. I don't know, maybe when the, maybe when the trash company comes and dumps it and when they set it back down, maybe there's a few papers that are sitting there that might maybe blow over.
Well, on the, on the pushback side, I, you said that there was a, a man that lives in the area that used to work for the boat, the boat company, but he comes through there every once in a while. I can't imagine one person creating enough garbage to throw over the fence, especially in your, in your location, that it would cause the neighbors to be really upset. So, I don't know, I don't know where it's coming from. But you need to do whatever you can on your side of the fence.
Absolutely.
To make sure that the noise is down. And so, and also that folks aren't throwing, even your own employees, aren't throwing things over the fence. So.
Absolutely. I just wanted to speak on one other thing, because we talked about, I talked about the study session, about how the vacuums are policed. It's a, they're high maintenance pieces. They get clogged. People have problems. The cuffs sometimes fall off. So we do, on a, most busy days, really, which, most days, we have somebody who's actually out there, who's just kind of working the vacuums. So we are policing the vacuums. Each pole has a small sign on it that talks about a little bit how to use the vacuum. And one of the things on there is, is keep your music at a respectable level. So we are out there policing the vacuums. We have other locations where we back up right to neighbors, where they're right behind the vacuums. And so I, I think we've learned to do a really good job with that.
Okay. We're assuming that this is going to pass. So if, if it passes, that's a good maintenance item for you, and we'll see what happens. We do have an, we do have an amendment. I'm going to take a vote on the amendment, which is modification of the hours. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Now we have the main motion. Mr. Mattlebaum?
I had a couple, just a few questions. Some of them were already, were already addressed. But the, you went from 22 vacuums down to 18. And then the, those spaces that have, that they're no longer vacuums, you added extra green space away from the homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, the arms for the vacuums, with the fence being eight feet high, will they be, be able to be seen from the neighbors? Will they stick over the fence?
At eight feet?
Yes, they're 10 feet tall.
Yeah, they would see the top two feet of the, of the curve of the.
Okay. The, you mentioned that the buzzer noise can be modified so it's not as, as loud as that.
Yeah, I, yeah, we can for sure look into that.
And I know Mr. Frazier mentioned about trash cans, that, you know, hopefully, we can have some trash cans near the vacuums. Because obviously, if you have a lot, a lot of trash, the vacuum's not going to pick it up. Do you put signs on the walls near the vacuums as well, reminding people to, you know, not play music loudly? I wasn't sure if that was, if you just police it, or if you actually have signs that state.
But we have, we have signs. And so we'll be, I'm sure we'll be applying for sign permits so that we're able to put those signs up. I mean, here's, here's one of our signs. I don't know if you can see it, but it just talks about free vacuums for car wash customers only. Please help us, be good neighbors, turn music off while vacuuming. So this is our site in Warren, where we had the same kind of thing, went before city council to get approval. And those houses in Warren are literally, they're 30 feet from the vacuum. So they're right along the wall. We don't have an eight foot wall. It's a six foot wall. And we've coexisted fine.
Okay.
But we do have to police it because people do pull up. They don't see the sign. They're not as respectful. So we do have to on occasion. We've had to go out there and the manager will go out there, if there's no one already out there, and ask somebody to turn that music down.
Through the chair, Mr. Mattlebaum? I just want to point out that there are three vacant lots and one lot with a residential unit that would border where these vacuums are. And since they eliminated the vacuums on the eastern side and kind of pushed them to the west, it would only be visible from an angle. I don't believe it'll be directly visible from their backyard. But it is two feet higher than the wall.
Okay. It's not, it's not that, not that bad. The other thing I would encourage is the petitioner to, now that you know that we have another complaint about some of the noise, maybe reach out to that neighbor and see what his complaints are, if there's a way to address it and make him feel that his concerns are, are being taken seriously. When this plan came to us in, in the study session, I know that I was not sure as, as was mentioned during the, as was mentioned during the Planning Commission, that the, you know, this is one of the entrance ways to the city and the city center. Whether or not there's a better use for the boat shop locate, you know, to take over that location, I don't know. Do I want to wait for something better? I don't know. I do like your landscaping plan, or at least the, the design. I think it's going to add to the city. I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we try to be good neighbors as we can. The, the one other item that I would like, if, if, if you're agreeable and if council's agreeable, is, again, with the hours. Saturday morning, you start at 7:00 AM. I don't know what, how many people are using the car wash at 7:00 AM on Saturday. I don't know if it's possible to move that to the same hours as Sunday with an 8:00 AM start time, just again, to help with some of the neighbors' complaints or noise issues.
We have an ordinance that allows contractors to start their work at seven, seven o'clock in the morning.
Correct.
So I don't imagine this is anything louder than, than putting in as construction.
But, you know, construction is not every day or as frequent than having every Saturday or every Sunday at 7:00 AM. And I'll say, you know, right now, they're doing construction in my neighborhood. And every, every Saturday morning around 6:45, you hear all the trucks driving onto the site and everything else. And I know that it's temporary, so I'm okay with it. But I think if it was on a continual basis, I may, I may have a problem with it and would come back to the city, asking them to, to change that Saturday start time at least. Again, that's my own feeling. I don't know how anyone else feels about that. But I thought I would mention that.
You can make another amendment. You can make a motion for, to amend it. If it, if no one gets to second it, you'll die for the lack of a second.
Well, then I would like to make a motion that we make, amend the out, the, the start time on Saturday to 8:00 AM.
We'll support it.
We have amendment to the hours of operation on Saturday morning to begin at 8:00 AM rather than at 7:00 AM. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Sir Ficassi?
No.
Sir Frazier?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
Nope.
Motion dies.
That was a nice try.
We need to vote now?
Yes, we do have, yeah, he has more questions.
Just one more, just for the city planner. I know that we received two recommendations from you. One was unfavorable and one was favorable with different.
Findings.
Considerations.
Yes.
Can you explain the differences or explain which way you're leaning towards now?
Well, we, we prepared a recommendation for unfavorable approval based on what the Planning Commission recommended. Based on, based on comments that were discussed at the council study session, it appeared that possibly the majority of council may consider approving it. We did not want to get into a situation with a previous special land use where the council acted differently than what the recommendation was. And we didn't have any conditions or recommendations. So we provided, in this case, which was unique, we provided both a favorable and unfavorable, depending on the public hearing and the discussion tonight. So I think it's appropriate that if you, if the council, the motion on the table is to approve with the condition of the changing the hours of operation. And that could be folded into the recommendation that we provided for, for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
I call a question, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show there's five yays and one nay. Or four yays and one nay.
So our next items, now that the.
Thank you.
The special approval has passed is to discuss PCP 17-0001, which is a specific site plan review request of Super Car Wash Systems for the demolition of existing structures related to the Northwestern Boat Company and the construction of now 18 vehicle vacuum cleaners on properties located at 19708 and 19740 West 10 Mile Road. I would ask the applicant and the architect, just to go through your site plan quickly for, for council's consideration. And you do receive the revised landscape and site plan in your packet.
Now, each one of you have a smaller version of.
Chester, Chester, can you speak to the mic?
The smaller plan that we presented to you shows the various angles of the development. And it's quite clear that we're trying to enhance that area to the biggest extent possible. We've got a screen wall of grates and brick piers. It's got surface retention that we're enhancing and camouflaging with extra landscaping and bouldering. And view from 10 Mile Road would be quietly, quite improved. Naturally, anything over there, what the marina looks like, would be an improvement. But we would like to have that as an extension of the landscaping that's at the car wash right now. And it, I feel it's the best use of that property, based on my experience as an architect with other people who looked at that site. It's a shallow site and with the setback requirements, front and back. And if it was a commercial development, we'd have to have a 10 by 50 loading area. And so many other factors involved that people have just shied away from that site. And as I mentioned, it would be a hard sell for someone to come in there and say, oh, I want to put up an office building. It would also require more hard surfacing and underground storm detention, which this facility, as we proposed it, will not require. And that's another thing a developer has to consider. It might cost $40,000 to $50,000 to provide underground storm detention for a site to be developed.
You've already sold that part. That was in the last one. So we're just looking at the site plan?
What was the question?
I say you've already sold the, the fact that it's a narrow, it's a shallow thing and, and hard surface and all that. So we're just talking about the site plan now?
Yeah.
What the, tell us about the site plan.
So it's developed as much as we can with the landscaping and with requirements for the vacuum units. As mentioned, we've taken out four vacuum units, which adds about 800 square feet of landscaping. We wouldn't just sod it. We're adding landscaping as well. And that softens the traffic coming out of the car wash because then if you're going to get your vacuum units, going to the vacuum units, the people who dry down a car can also be in that lane as well. So.
Could jump in?
Yes.
I think one of the things we're missing to point out is that there's extensive landscape screening along 10 Mile.
Right.
Which includes brick pier and wrought iron fencing.
Right.
Which will help to screen the cars and the maneuverability.
Yeah.
And that is an upgrade from definitely what's, what's there now. So besides cleaning up the boat shop, the street presence on 10 Mile is will be vastly improved through this landscape plan.
Thank you.
The, the car wash itself is screened with a three foot brick wall now. It's on a berm and there's some landscaping in the corner near the liquor store. And that's landscaped quite well. We would continue the theme of that with a graded fencing and brick piers like Terry mentioned.
Okay.
We're also, also eliminating three curb cuts as well that, that the boat property has.
Pardon me?
We're also eliminating three curb cuts along 10 Mile.
Okay. Counsel?
I'll approve, Mr. Chairman. One question, the wrought iron thing is going up, right? Okay, like the plan I have?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that's an improvement over just the brick wall because it does provide site security in.
Yeah.
But it still does screen.
It looks like down the street?
And it, it incorporates exactly what we've been trying to do on Evergreen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move PSP 17-0001 site plan review request, Super Car Wash Systems.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve PSP 17-0001. Is there any question?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlebaum?
In our notes, it says that for the site plan number, that there's construction of 23 vacuums?
Yes, I corrected that when I, I read, read it in.
Okay.
Based on the special land use approval. This, this was published prior to the revisions.
Got it.
So just, just to be clear, the site plan as proposed includes the eight foot high screen wall and the reduction of the vacuums from 22 to 18. Your special land use approval amends their hours of operation. So if there's no other conditions, it'll be part and parcel to what was submitted on Friday.
Okay.
Ms. Seymour?
I want, to the planner, I want to understand. The eight foot wall is not there now, but it's going to be? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's an existing six foot high wall.
Okay.
They're proposing to raise it two additional feet to eight feet to address the noise issue.
Okay.
That is part of the plan. So that's not a, a separate condition. I just wanted to point that out.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I, I.
Well, actually, the wall, excuse me, the wall on the boat property, there is no, there's not a wall there, right? We're talking about my, we're talking about my wall.
Yes, right.
So we'll, we're extending my wall two feet to eight feet, and then we're continuing that same wall down through that property.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes. So the existing wall at the car wash is going from six to eight. And then a new wall will be constructed to eight feet for the new, new property.
Okay, thank you.
But this is all part of the same approval.
Okay.
Any other comments? I do have one. In the negotiation for the increase in the height of the wall, was it made clear that the same material?
Yes, the, it's, at least, we complement, complementary materials, as close as we can match with a cap.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Sometimes this, you can't get exactly the same.
Oh, yeah. Well, even, you know, sometimes the sun bleaches the, the material, so as close as possible. Okay?
Okay.
Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We have a number of people for communications. The first one is Pamela Gerald.
First to hear on here, I don't think, Mr. Chairman.
The second is Gerard Mullin. Don't see him. The third person that asks for recognition is Geraldine Amato.
Want my handkerchief?
Yeah. The next person that asks for recognition is Alan Todd. I don't see Alan Todd moving. The next person that asks for recognition is Marsha Beal.
Ms. Beal informed me that she withdrew her request.
Okay. The next person that asks for recognition is Alicia Nelson.
Oh, also withdrawn her request.
Okay.
Mr. Ron?
The next person is Susan Towil.
Towil.
Pardon me?
Towil.
Towil?
Yes.
That's, if you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes. You don't know you're going to be there this fast, did you?
Hi, my name is Susan Towil, T-A-W-I-L. I live at one seven zero zero one Jeanette in Southfield. Okay? Well, Honored Mayor, Honored Mayor Pro Tem, Honored Councilman, with citizens. I'm here because I'd like to speak to the necessity and really what I feel is the city's mandate to install sidewalks and streetlights in our neighborhood. We have neither right now. Our neighborhood is, is currently under horrendous construction that's been going on for months and months to put in new sewer lines, as I'm sure the city council is aware of. I just thought that it would be like a terrific opportunity, you know, like Carpe Diem, you know, everything is smashed and crashed and shreked and wrecked right now, that it would be the greatest opportunity right now to put in the sidewalks when they reinstall the parts of the, of our, of our homes that they've smashed up and, and destroyed. So I did speak with Councilman Mandelbaum previous to my coming here tonight and he told me that the process is that there's a need for an assessment that's quite costly. He said it's like twenty-five percent of the cost of what the sidewalks or the streetlights would be. And I just wanted to know if the city could possibly override that process because otherwise we won't have the time to do it when everything is already under deconstruction and it would have to be all broken up again once they reinstall the streets. So I just thought this was a great time and it would be a great opportunity to do that. I really feel it's the city's responsibility and mandate to keep our citizens safe and it's really not safe. We don't have streetlights and it's pitch dark. We have long, cold, dark winters, icy, snowy streets. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have streetlights, so people have to walk in the streets and it, it's just, it's very, it's very dangerous. We don't have sidewalks, there's lots of kids in the neighborhood that don't have places to, you know, to ride. They ride, there's streets, there are bikes in the, in the street, which is dangerous. And I know of a lot of families that have expressed the, the, the opinion that they wouldn't move to Southfield because there's no sidewalks and because there's no streetlights and it's dangerous here. So like, I just feel bad about that. I just think it would be, you know, really nice if we could, we could have this, these put on. That's what I wanted to say.
Can you get sixty percent of your neighbors to, to want sidewalks?
I believe so. I was just sent the petition.
Have to have sixty percent or better?
Yeah, I, I did send Mrs. Towil all the special assessment district information, including the petitions and all the, the entire process.
I'm going to go around, you know, I mean, jumping over the path holes and the mud puddles and everything that's on the street right now. I plan to go around and get the-
Putting in after the road and catch whatever work is being done, you can still put in sidewalks, you know?
There, there is a, a process defined.
I know there's a process, but I mean, but talking about time element this year.
Time, I, I'm not exactly sure what section.
That would be a big problem, we've got so much construction going on right now.
I mean, now seems to be the time to do it.
Has to get ready for next year.
There are other considerations and I will tell you, cash flow considerations. We're in a remarkably large period of capital and all of our dollars are committed. If we build the sidewalk and do a special assessment, that needs to be financed as well and those items take time to set up.
Yeah.
So the, the street light-
Did you contact this young lady, Fred?
Yeah.
Give her some advice, what you can do, what you can't do?
The, the lighting too has a process and the street lighting itself is not expensive, but there is a process to find and it requires that a majority of people come together and say this. I will say this, to anyone who wants to put a sidewalk anytime in front of their property, you can do that, one piece at a time and that's how that can start. But we're, we're happy to work with people in those special assessments process. We're also about to embark on a Safe Routes to School, which we've committed over six hundred thousand to that. I'm not exactly sure where on, Jeanette, you are.
I'm between Pierce and, I should have said that. I'm between Pierce and Southfield. Between Pierce and Lathrop, actually.
And we could start the engineering process, but it begins with people making that request.
Right, so I'm just worried that it will take so long that they'll already rebuild it. I mean, it's going on for months and months and months, or I don't know, but-
And I don't know exactly the, the exact timing of where we're at and there's multiple sections going on and there, I think there's six, seven different sections in that part of the city, so I would need to see exactly where you're at.
Okay.
And Mr. Zorn?
You know, this being May, this is typically something we would like to, a year before, so.
I know, I should have, you know, done it beforehand. What about streetlights?
The street lighting's a process that defines, it's something the city does not operate, utility system. We work with Detroit Edison and coordinate that. Those wires are usually ran overhead, that can be done at any time, but that process itself can, you know, six and seven, eight months is not atypical for that to happen.
For the assessment of it or for?
Between the assessment and the final installation.
Uh huh, okay, because it's, it's just really dangerous.
We're happy to set up a meeting with the city engineer. We've spent a lot of time in those particulars, in that particular section.
I just don't understand why our section of neighborhood, I mean, I'm talking about Hilton, Jeanette, Surefield, whatever, there, there are no streetlights. You know?
Again, the petition.
If you go walking at night, you know, and it's, it's, it's just dangerous.
I don't have any streetlights in my neighborhood either.
Do you have sidewalks?
No.
So you walk in the street at night?
No. I drive my car.
Okay. I mean, there's a lot of kids, I, I, a lot of people have said they've almost hit people, et cetera. I also have to say, a lot of the neighborhood, myself included, is Orthodox Jewish and we don't drive our car on Friday, on Friday night and Saturday. So the men all go to synagogue on Friday night and they come back in the wintertime especially, it's, well, it's always pitch dark, you know, because it's, it's after sunset. So when they come back from synagogue on Friday night, they have to walk in the street. They usually wear black suits, so it's very hard to see them and it's dangerous.
By the same token, I have been driving through some neighborhoods and I've seen sidewalk, I'm there with sidewalks and the people are still walking in the street.
Okay, I believe if there were sidewalks, people would walk on the sidewalks, but-
Through, through the chair, through the chair?
Yes.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Pardon me?
Can I make a few comments?
Yes, you, yes, you may.
This city, as I've said many times, was developed in the nineteen sixties when we had a very auto-dominated land use pattern and therefore we inherited many neighborhoods without sidewalks. The last five years, we've made a concert, a concentrated effort to be more pedestrian-friendly and safe. We've installed over nine point two five miles of sidewalks and pathways. We have another three miles planned or approved for construction and it, and that doesn't include the six hundred thousand dollars that were received through the Safe Routes to School to install more sidewalks in, in your neighborhood as well as some safe pedestrian crossings. As Mr. Zorn had indicated, we have worked with special assessment districts for various things throughout the city, but there's a process. We have to do design engineering, cost estimating. I think the best thing you could do is get support from your neighbors that will help, help us do the planning and logistics and coming up with the cost estimate to move this thing forward. So I think there's been a concerted effort to make us safer, to be more pedestrian-friendly and we have a good track record in the last few years and we continue to do that throughout the city.
Thank you so much. I, I do plan to circulate the petition and I'll hand it in and see what happens after that. I just, I just thought this was the opportunity, when everything is, is under construction, it would be the best time to do it instead of waiting for this whole process of, you know, the assessment, but gotta go by the rules, gotta go by the rules, okay? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. The last person that asks for recognition is Mr. Harold Hill.
Oh, there he is.
If you'd give your name and, and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay, three minutes start now or, well, never mind. Anyway, my name is Harold Hill and I live at two two three hundred Seminole Street, Southfield, Michigan, and I am a twenty year, twenty-seven year, excuse me, resident of the proud city of Southfield, so is the council mayor. Thank you for this time. I just wanted to say I was really happy to see that Southfield took the initiative to start with the infrastructure along with the roads, you know, so they were doing the pipes, infrastructure at the same time and then the completed process was when you had quality roads. That's great. And I just, because I'm concerned about the city, for the health of the city, I was just wondering, I saw the budget for two thousand seventeen and eighteen and I noticed the comparison that it was going to be a decrease of, well, over a hundred percent, well, from twenty-five million down to six, down to nine million, excuse me, a sixteen million dollar difference. And I was wondering because I got a chance to benefit from the fact that they, they did the infrastructure, water and sewer, and so I was just wondering, are we completely finished or almost finished? And that's why there's a big decrease in the infrastructure, water and sewage or, you know, I'm not sure why, but I know that most people, it's like a surgical procedure. When they were doing the waters and sewers, like the other lady mentioned, it's a pain. It's, it's a pain, but the good thing is afterwards you heal quick because you have new smooth roads and infrastructure's done, so you feel safe. So I was just, that was this one question that I had and I also just had one more question. I was at a city council meeting and they said something about a sinkhole, I mean, and so was water and sewer part of that budget or what? Because I didn't know even they had a sinkhole at, what is it, Franklin Road and Telegraph. So that's just my, my questions and so as a concerned person, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Mrs. Zorn, are you?
Well, we, we currently do have a sinkhole at Telegraph and Franklin.
Yes.
And it's indicative of the infrastructure issue that we faced in southeastern Michigan and the state of Michigan and, and the country. What we have is a, a, a sanitary sewer line property of the Oakland County Water Resource Commission that has collapsed and caused a major flush out of the area and if, from aerial photos, you see an opening thirty-five to forty feet diameter. As we work to reconstruct Franklin Road, that will, will be repaired. The line, this is very similar to what we hear about in Frazier, but a smaller scale, but it is indicative of the infrastructure problem. Huge, and the issue gets skirted around as to who's responsible for supervising or cammering the sanitary lines. In the last year, South, Southfield, we have bought new equipment to camera our, our sewer lines, but not all the sewer lines are the city's. We camera our sewer lines and I'll use, for example, on water sewer, we stay have, three years ago, we had over two hundred water main breaks a year. You're down to under fifteen. The infrastructure investment is paying off large dividends. Now we've got this issue where our infrastructure interfaces with other jurisdictions' interfaces. The city attorney, myself, city engineer, public works director, spent a substantial amount of time working with the Water Resource Commission, trying to hammer out some type of agreeable inspection process and we're still working our way through that. Relative to the water department, yes, capital expenditure, when you're looking at the budget, is slightly less this year and it's simply because of the dollars we've committed and we still have a lot of water sewer projects under construction. Section twenty-four, twenty-five, the, the resident who just spoke before Mr. Hill made reference, heard that particular neighborhood's going through a substantial rebuild, the water sewer, storm, infrastructure.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is council. We have a travel expense report.
Also move, Mr. Chairman, on Dan's expense report.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the travel expense report from Mr. Daniel Brightwell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Anything else the council would like to bring? Mr. Mandelbaum?
I wanted to thank and congratulate the Southfield Police Department on a wonderful open house yesterday. I know that with the rain, it got a little complicated, but they moved everything indoors. I was there with my children. I know that, I saw some other families there as well. It was a very nice time, so hopefully when they do it again next year, we can have, we could do it again and make it even better. I also want to wish congratulations to all those Southfield students who are graduating, whether it's preschool, high school, college, whatever it is, congratulations. And lastly, with the Memorial Weekend coming up, those of you who plan to barbecue, please be safe. We'd rather not have you have the need to call our Southfield Fire Department. As much as they'd love to come to a barbecue, they'd rather not have to come with their lights and sirens rushing to help you put out your, put out the flames.
You don't want to be the barbecue.
Definitely. So with that, have, have a good evening and have a very nice holiday weekend.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, just two things real quick. Last week, at our meeting, Councilwoman Morris announced a event taking place here at the city, the City of Southfield Town Hall on the Roads and she's asked to notify everyone that the date announced last week has been changed now. So the Town Hall on the Roads will now be on Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty-seventeen, from six until eight o'clock and will be held at the Southfield Public Library. So the initial date has been canceled, but will still take place on the fifteenth for the Town Hall on Roads. The only other thing I was just going to ask the administrator, if he could take a look at for me, that last week and this week, public access channels have been blacked out on AT&amp;T users, me being one of them. So the, I know the city council, council meeting last week was not televised and it was today, before I came here today, I checked mine and it was still blacked out, it's been off all week. So I don't know who we need to talk to to get that straightened out, but hopefully we can get that taken care of and maybe replay last weekend, this week, you know.
Well, you have AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T, yeah. Yeah, Comcast apparently was working, but AT&amp;T was not. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mayor?
Wanted to mention that tomorrow, we will be receiving our sister city delegation. Ten people are arriving tomorrow morning at Metropolitan Airport from Dangjecheon, South Korea. We have a full schedule for our sister city guests, starting at the Southfield Public Library tomorrow afternoon and running through the week, visiting businesses, schools and several area attractions. Our delegation will be leaving on Saturday morning. I do want to acknowledge the sponsors that are helping to underwrite this visit of the ten people from the City of Dangjecheon. That's the Weston Hotel, the Best Weston Premier Hotel, Lear Corporation- That's the Weston Hotel, the Best Western Premier Hotel, Lear Corporation, BASF, Eaton Corporation, Lawrence Tech, and resident Barbara Selden are all helping us underwrite the cost of this visit. I want to repeat something I mentioned last week. Our provider for trash and yard waste is catching up on sticks, branches, limbs that are out at the curb and remind people that small piles of sticks really should be bagged or put in recycling bins, the yard waste bins rather, as they tend to jam up the chipper because they get in there sideways and consequently that slows the process of getting the branches picked up that are out at the curb. And then I'll just tell a little story. The other day I was over at the town center and I happened to run into one of the top executives of a large healthcare provider in Michigan and as she has mentioned to me several times, in moving their offices to Southfield, they were desirous of seeing more top name or large restaurants, not fast food. And I spoke of, and I hear this from other people as well, and so I said, well, perhaps you haven't heard of the opening of the Nomad Grill at the Best Western Premier. The grill is fully open and I believe this week, because now that they're accepting, the hotel is open, they have started breakfast service. The sign is up on Telegraph, but again, maybe people haven't noticed because you go by at 50 miles an hour, but the, I'm encouraging people to check out the Nomad Grill. If we want sit-down restaurants, we need to support them. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator? Yes, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm requesting a resolution that the council approve the appointment of Mark Pilot to the Position of Building Official effective May 22, 2017, at the base wage of $92,000 in management grade, management grade Group P with an eligibility for 5 percent increase after successful completion of the six-month review period with the same rights and benefits as afforded to other management group employees. I'm pleased to recommend Mark Pilot to this position. He's a 30-year employee with the city. He's been performing the responsibilities as acting building official since January of 2016. Okay, I need a motion.
I still move.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the appointment of building official of Mark Pilot as the building official for the City of Southfield as a management employee. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I mean, yes.
We can't swear him in this evening because we don't have a clerk?
Have him see the clerk on her return.
But if you come to work like you're supposed to, the clerk will be back. And congratulations.
Congratulations, both of you guys, yep.
Attorney, do you have anything this evening?
No, you're...
Clerk, do you have anything? Okay, we have nothing to schedule. We do have one ordinance to enact.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1675.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we enact ordinance number 1675. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Is there anything else to come before the group this evening? Mr. President, the COSA event this Wednesday? Permit? The COSA event this Wednesday, if you want to plug it. COSA? COSA.
On Wednesday evening, the, our Commission on Senior Adults will be holding their...
AARP.
AARP, Age Aging in Place, Age Friendly Community Reception from 6 to 8 p.m. in the pavilion. Our guests from Dangjecheon will be attending after they leave Lawrence Tech.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Seeing no other business to come before the council, the meeting's adjourned.